Now, there's just in the general in the city, there are negotiations that are going to happen between the unions and the administration, obviously of which we're not a party to. But I'm sure that all of those things will be taken into account, not just for our agency and our staff, but for any staff like ours where they need to go to the field. They have a very difficult job, I'm sure you understand. Our inspectors need to not only understand the housing maintenance code, but they need to come in with some pre-knowledge about construction, and they need to have excellent customer service skills, which, you know, is often a challenge as well.
Yeah, I'd imagine that, you know, often pay for city jobs is a huge barrier, right? We're competing against a private market that has significantly more resources or seems to be more generous in how they expend those resources. So I think, I'm sure that's a significant barrier here.
We have, I'm sorry, councilmember, just to finish that thought. You know, we have tried to make it clear to potential candidates that the other benefits, though, that a city job does have, right? The pensions, the healthcare that often, at least in construction trades, maybe are not always, you know, par for the job. So highlighting that, we're also hoping to try and bring in some more candidates.
That's great. I mean, I think all of our offices collectively are part of your recruitment effort. I know we take those flyers out. Given that housing is New Yorkers' number one issue, right? Safe, dignified, affordable housing is the crisis of New York City. Making sure that HPD is fully funded to do that work is really critical, and the role of inspectors. I was curious about, you know, fines and civil penalties and how the agency both levies fines and civil penalties and collects. So if you could, if you could tell us, how many, how many of these fines and civil penalties have you levied? How much have you collected? How much have you forgiven? And for what reasons would you have forgiven?
Okay, councilmember, sure, thank you. And this is an important part of our enforcement as well. So I am going to break it into three general categories of where we do collections or collections are done for HPD activity, enforcement activity. And I will talk about two, and then I will defer to our Assistant Commissioner for Litigation to talk about the last. HPD can bill a property for emergency repair work, right? And that would include whether it's done through our emergency repair program, whether it's done through our alternative enforcement program, it works the same way. We can bill a property for fees, which are imposed in special cases defined in the code where basically around multiple offenders. Where if you've had three inspections, four inspections for the same apartment or the same condition, the agency will levy a fee. For being in the alternative enforcement program after a certain point, fees start to get levied against that property as well. That's the second category, fees. The third category would be for civil penalties, where in order to recoup penalties against a property for the violations, HPD would go to housing court and seek the civil penalties there that would either result in a settlement or the imposition of a judgment by the court. The first two that I spoke about, the charges and the fees, on a regular basis, HPD prepares the records for these charges or fees, and we communicate them to the Department of Finance. The Department of Finance then adds those fees and charges onto the property's property tax bill. And the collection mechanism is really whatever collection mechanisms the Department of Finance has, which would include, you know, agreements, payment agreements, if your property qualifies, which would include going into a place where the lien may be sold. In the past, when that happened, would be the overview, under the purview of finance to ensure that those collections were done. For civil penalties, it's not the same process. It is not billed through the Department of Finance. So I will turn it over to Assistant Commissioner Wythman for just a minute to talk about how that happens.
So I guess before you jump in, do you have an amount of how much on an annual basis you have referred to DOF to collect?
Yes, we can provide the specific amounts generally for emergency repair. And for emergency repairs, about, I think, 10 million, I want to say, a year. I don't know if I had the... Right, the dollars, we were prepared with some percentages, which we can talk about later. But we can provide the dollars to you. Whatever, basically whatever we spend on emergency repair, so if we have to, the agency has to do a repair on an emergency condition because an owner fails to do so, when we pay our vendor who has done that work, that amount, whatever that vendor invoices us for, plus an administrative fee, is combined and sent over for collection. And so the amount I would give you would be the charge that we... There's one charge that we spent, sent over for collection, and there's a different charge of how much we spent. So I just want to make sure that we give you the correct numbers, so we can absolutely circle that back to you.
I'd love to know specifically, like, how much, how much has been repaid on time? How much has been, if anything, gets forgiven? What is that process? Is there reasons for forgiveness in this respect?
So I'll stick again with emergency repair charges and fees. There is a process in the law that when, after we transfer those charges over to finance, the property owner has a period of time where they can protest the charge. And that's the term that's used. They can only protest the charge for a very limited number of reasons. The actual cost of the charge not being one of those reasons, right? So they can protest saying that they didn't receive notice that the charge was going to happen. Or for fees, that there was a reason, and they need to provide evidence of that reason, why they couldn't access the apartment to make repairs, for example. They submit those protests to HPD. We receive a very small number of protests every year. And of it, it's about less than 200 protests in the past few years, and we send over thousands of charges, thousands of charges. And less than 5% of those, 5% of those challenges, those protests have been upheld.
Councilmember Aviles, while you think on that, we did send these questions in advance. And many of these questions, including ERP charges. And so I would love to get it on the record at this hearing, because we did send it in advance. And specifically, just to put some detail on what Councilmember Aviles just asked. According to our analysis at the Council of Open Data, in 2018, there were 31 million, 31.7 million was spent on ERP. 2019, 53.3 million. 2021, 59 million. 2022, 59.3 million. In 2020, that's not in order, but 40, 40 million. So there's, there's so much money that is being expended by the administration on this program, for good reason. These are emergency conditions, Class C violations. But we do need to have an understanding of how much we're recouping of these charges that are being charged.
Thank you, councilmember, and I do have the percentages. I just didn't have the dollar figures. So again, we can provide that specific information to you in the response as well. If you give me one second again. My page is out of order. Okay. So the period of time we looked at for rate of collection, I think, was the question, was 2017 through 2022 fiscal years. And so I'll go kind of one by one in categories and just give you a range. And again, the details will be in a written response to the council questions. In, as of, basically now, as of October of 2022, 94% of the heat and hot water fees billed in, back in 2016 and 17, have been collected. For the most recent year that was billed, 2022, 66% of those fees have been collected. As of, again, the end of October. For code enforcement inspection fees, and again, this pretty much is the same, in the same range, a little bit less for AEP fees. But for code inspection fees, for the 2016, 2017 year or 2018, about 96% of what was billed was, has been collected. And as of the most recent year, 2022, 77% of what was billed has been collected.
And so what happens when you haven't collected from an owner?
So again, the collection process itself is overseen by Department of Finance. So they can provide more information about what the next steps might be in terms of pursuing collection.
Do those properties get tagged? And like, does it overlap with potential violations? I would suspect, if you're not paying your bills, you're probably also doing other things.
Well, that may be, councilmember, I don't know. But HPD does do somewhat of an enforcement of the payment of fees by indicating that property owners can't get certain services through us if they don't pay their fees. So for example, if a property owner has open violations on their property, they would have to come to the Department of, they would have to come to HPD and file for what's known as a dismissal request inspection, for which they would pay for an inspector to come and re-inspect the property. If all of these fines and ERP charges and fees have not been paid, we reject that request until such time as things are paid. Now, that is not the ultimate collection, you know, enforcement. But certainly, we try to make sure that our outstanding charges are paid prior to providing a new service for a property owner.
Got it. So in terms of the, I realize I'm at time, but in terms of the other side of the ledger, I'm sorry. Could you speak to those questions?
Yes, thank you, councilmember. As Deputy Commissioner Santiago explained, in order for HPD to obtain civil penalties, we must initiate an action or litigation in housing court. Once we do have a judgment, our Housing Litigation Division does have a judgment enforcement unit, which takes over those judgments, and they have a whole process and a number of tools at their disposal to identify assets of the debtor, and they seek to find the money. They, of course, try to resolve the issue with the owner, but if the owner is not willing to pay the judgment, we do have tools to try to find those assets.
Are the judgments reflected in the balances that the council member noted earlier? Or those are just in collection?
The civil penalties are separate from the fees, yes.
Okay. Do we have a sense of how much is outstanding in civil penalties?
So if I can just give some more background on civil penalties. The way civil penalties work is, you know, often in the course of a trial or a settlement with the property owner, if civil penalties are imposed, there's usually a time schedule set for the payment of those civil penalties. And generally, I believe we have good compliance with the payment of those civil penalties. One of our outstanding issues, it's not, issue's not really the right word, but is that a lot of times when we go to court, if an owner does not appear in court, a default judgment is assessed, right? For the maximum penalties because the owner did not appear. That kind of goes on our books as a outstanding open charge. But in reality, when the landlord eventually does appear, oftentimes, they will go back to court and seek some reduction of that amount because they will size it to when the conditions were actually corrected. And so, you know, what is a $2 million default penalty may wind up being a much less actual penalty when they come to court and they make their case. So we try to look at the amounts, really, that are not paid as, not part of a default penalty, and we didn't prepare those numbers for today, but we can certainly take a look at that, councilmember.
Great. I just have one last thing, just switching, switching topics, as is our way. Just really quickly, something in our district that has recently come up, among many things. But we have a set of seven buildings in our district that has applied for an Article 11 letter. Currently, six of the seven buildings have no boiler. Apparently, their boilers that they've ordered and are trying very hard to get will not come in until three months, right? So we have a severe supply chain issue. You know, the residents have tried hard, they've called our office, we have called your office multiple times, and we have not received any response. Obviously, we don't know how cold the weather is going to get, but three months without boilers is not okay, and is an emergency situation. So I would love for your staff to follow up with us around how we can help these residents get access to a temporary boiler or, you know, whatever remedy relief they can. They're working hard, but they're not getting responses from the agency staff, they keep calling.
Okay, if you can, you know, communicate that information to me, I'm not aware of the specifics.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you so much, councilmember. I'd actually like to turn that into a question for the record. How, in extreme situations like that, I have several of those kind of cases in my district as well, where we're talking about a lower-income building, we're talking about a building that, one, in Councilmember Aviles' case, it's on backorder. In other, in other building situations, they just don't have the financing, but, you know, still remain responsible for their buildings. What is HPD's protocol to assist in these very expensive kind of repairs?
Thank you, councilmember. I'll probably share this answer with our Assistant Commissioner for Emergency Operations. But as always, the process would be, we issue a violation, we contact the owner to find out what's happening, if they're going to make the repair. If we go out there to the building and we see that there's no boiler, you know, that's a pretty stark situation. That doesn't happen that often, thank goodness. But certainly, we would assess the building for what the appropriate action is. And that could be one of a number of scenarios. So let's talk about, I guess, the good scenario first, where the Emergency Operations Division can make some assessment that would move the building in the right direction. And then, well, you know, obviously, the most extreme, and I don't want to jump to the most extreme version of that, right? But if, if this is the, and again, I don't know the specifics of your situation, but if the boiler is so specialized that there is no other option but to wait for this special order, you know, a vacate order may be warranted and issued. I can't, you know, again, not knowing the details, I can't speak to that. But that is very rare occurrence that it becomes something so extreme. So assuming that it's not in that realm, I will turn it over to the Assistant Commissioner.
Thank you, Emery. So in cases like you described, if, in fact, the building is compatible for a mobile steam unit, we do have on-call contracts available with contractors who can produce that type of unit to provide temporary heat and relief for the tenants of the buildings. Simultaneously, we would look at a long-term solution if the owner was unable to do so independently or was being uncooperative with the repair that's necessary, or the replacement in this case.
Thank you so much. So moving into questions about the specific programs that HPD runs. I mean, I want to start off with a statement that, just to the public, to whoever might be watching and might be facing these conditions in your building. First and foremost, call 311, always call 311. It can seem like it's useless, it can seem very frustrating. The first step for us to have good information at the council and to work with the administration is having good data. So continue to call 311, log it in via the app, it's just so critically important. So starting off with emergency repairs, and I'm going to go emergency repairs, then underlying conditions, then proactive enforcement, then AEP litigation, 7A and CONH. So starting off, so we're going to be here for a second, so bear with me. But starting off with ERP. Emergency repairs are carried out by the agency when there are violation, C-class violations that are hazardous to the health and safety of tenants. From the outside looking in, Deputy Commissioner, it is not straightforward to understand when the administration makes repairs, when the agency makes repairs, and when you don't. You know, certainly, if the landlord is going to do the work themselves, they do it. But in those cases where the landlord is not acting, what determines whether HPD acts or not?
Thank you, councilmember. And so there are some conditions where, in every case, you know, HPD will act, or attempt to act, let me say. So a lead-based paint violation, a window guard, a self-closing door, we will always be sending someone to assess, and if possible, make the correction of the condition. And so, you know, hopefully, we have communicated to tenants that they should be on the lookout for another HPD staff member to come after the housing inspector comes. There are some cases, mold, you know, can be a Class A violation or a Class B violation or a Class C violation, depending on the size of the mold as it's indicated in the law. And sometimes I think that can be confusing when it is either based on something like that, that's a square footage, or it's the discretion of the inspector. And, you know, we train our inspectors to understand when a condition is serious enough to warrant an emergency repair. When we are going to do an emergency repair, we send a letter to the tenant right after the violation is issued, at the same time, basically, that we send a notice to the landlord that the violation was issued. A notice does go to the tenant to say, HPD has identified that this condition is, warrants an emergency repair, you know, provide access to your landlord if they come to you to repair this. If not, HPD will be making an attempt, and we give them a telephone number to call to follow up with that.
So does HPD only go into a building when they receive that second call from a tenant?
No, that's not a call, no, I'm sorry. It just tells, it helps the tenant contact us if they want to contact us. Regardless of whether the tenant responds to that letter or not is irrelevant. It's really just to help the tenant understand what the process is.
So talking, speaking about who is doing this work. So you have, in Open Data, you have this distinction between handyman work orders and open-market work orders. And handyman work orders are conducted internally by the agency on certain kinds of repairs, with the vast majority of repairs being carried out by open-market work orders. So what is the distinction? What gets done in-house by the agency? What is the staffing level of internal ERP operations, if you will? And then how much, what percentage, conversely, is open-market work orders?
So for that answer, I'm going to defer to our Assistant Commissioner for Emergency Operations.
Thank you, Emery, thank you, councilmember. So with regard to open-market orders, as you mentioned, the vast, vast majority of ERP work is completed utilizing contractors who are awarded open-market orders. For the smallest of jobs, we utilize the handyman work orders. And literally, those are things like replacing a valve or installing a slide bolt and lock if necessary in certain situations as required. But again, the vast majority of work does go to contractors through the OMO process. Just in terms of contractors, you know, just want to highlight that we utilize mainly MWBE contractors. And we generally, I think the median work order amount that's awarded to these small contractors is about $300 per OMO.
So a, I believe, shouldn't do this from memory, but I will. A 2020 audit by the controller found that HPD didn't have the right proper controls in place to determine which, which open-market contractors or vendors were, are utilized by the agency. So not maintaining updated lists, not removing folks who are unresponsive, issues like that. What, what kind of changes has the administration made since this controller audit?
Yes, so I think the controller's audit referred to our pre-qualified list, and that is comprised largely of the MWBE contractors that I referred to a few minutes ago. We've made a number of changes on the technology side of the world to help us sort of better track things. And we've also implemented some policy changes that sort of change the way we interpret responsiveness as allowable under the city's PPB rules.
Thank you. Moving back to the question of fee recovery with respect to emergency repair, when charges move over to Department of Finance? And Department of Finance is not here today, but they did receive the questions. I was told that you would have their responses. Department of Finance, recovery of emergency repair charges, what do those percentages look like?
So those percentages are much lower than the ones that I gave you on the fees. From the 2018 period, as of today, we've collected about 63% of the emergency repair charges. And for the most recent fiscal year, it's 35%. I think, however, we're still working on these numbers with the Department of Finance because there are some additional caveats to keep in mind in terms of the collections from these periods. So in the past, as part of the tax lien sale, if money wasn't paid that was owed on particularly more emergency repair charges than fees, because the fees are so low as compared to the emergency repair costs, right? If they weren't paid, they could be sold through the tax lien sale. And to get it, these numbers on collections is really just exactly that. What was billed and what was paid. It doesn't include what may have gone for further enforcement on collection with the Department of Finance. And so, again, we're working with them through the data to try and understand what that number would look like, if you would consider the tax lien sale collections.
And we're not going to get into a hearing on the tax lien sale because that will occur in the future, I pretty much can promise. But looking at the question of those liens that go to DOF and face that highest level of enforcement, being the tax lien sale or third-party transfer or something else, do you have that rate? How many unpaid violations or overdue charges end up going through one of those tax enforcement programs?
I don't, and again, that's under the purview of the Department of Finance. And so I think that will be something we'll have to work with them to understand. I think from our perspective, you know, the fact that we've done the emergency repair work is our goal and is our mission. And we understand that they are the experts at tax collection and working with you all to make sure that, you know, if we provided a service at the building for the tenants, the owner might not appreciate that service, but we made that repair, that the collections are going to happen appropriately.
Okay. It is, it is a frustrating thing to hear because I specifically asked Department of Finance to share this because it's important for this council to understand. It's important for the council and the public to understand how our programs are working. We're not going to get into the tax lien sale and third-party transfer. We have goals regarding those programs or forming those programs that are about protecting homeownership and about protecting those who are vulnerable to losing intergenerational equity. However, we do need to get to the bottom line of, are buildings using ERP as their handyman, right? Are buildings abusing the system? And so that, let me just ask it plainly in that way. 62% collection of 2018 charges, 35% collection as of this time, these are, these are very low numbers, right? So folks are not paying their, not paying their charges, and there are buildings that are going through ERP, using the ERP program multiple times, time and again. The vast majority don't, not talking about those, focusing on the, on the bad actors. What do we know and how are we preventing buildings from using the city as their handyman?
Right, and again, I think, councilmember, thank you for that question. I think that goes back to why we started with the alternative enforcement program. That was really one of the, you know, ERP is one of the criteria under which we select buildings for that program. And I think, you know, we found some of those buildings are... And I think, you know, we found some of those buildings are actually just abandoned. And that's why, you know, a lot of the emergency repairs that need to happen fall to HPD to assist. And that can happen under a number of scenarios that doesn't implicate bad will. In some cases, property owners die and no one comes and the estate is, is unable to care for the property properly to handle the management of a property. In some cases, the owner is not skilled enough to maintain the financial health of the property. I think that there are a plethora of scenarios that go into why this happens. And I think, you know, through AEP is part of the way to weed some of those folks out because once they do see the hefty fees that will be billed, they stop using ERP if that was their, their method of doing so before. And I think, you know, as you said, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about the AEP program specifically. But that is the one program amongst our enforcement programs that takes the expenditure of ERP into consideration when selecting properties.
So let's go to AEP. That is, it's, it's one of the, one of the programs. So just, just to start, and you, you will say it better than, than I will. So can you, can you lay out for us, why was AEP created? These 250 buildings that are selected for AEP every year, what is their trajectory? How much of them, how many of them are getting out between, before the four-month period? And what is the trajectory for the rest?
Thank you, council member, yes. I, I will just, again, give background and then I will turn it over to Assistant Commissioner Dafina, who oversees that program for more of the detail around what we see there. So this program did start many years ago. We're currently in round 15 of the program. And every year, basically, we select another cohort of buildings for the program. As I just said, the program was initially created to really target buildings that not only were having a lot of violations issued, but were having a lot of emergency repair work done in those buildings in response to those violations. Where clearly the owner was potentially using the city to do their repairs for them or was really extending the time and the bad conditions under which the tenants were living. So at that time, we were selecting 200 buildings a year from rounds one through seven. And then AEP has been amended multiple times over the years, where we now select 250 buildings. And there were actually two separate criteria for the selection of the buildings. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Commissioner Dafina.
Good afternoon, everyone. So as Anne Marie mentioned, AEP, the, the goal of AEP was to get at repeat users of our enforcement activity. So we really wanted, an example would be the recurring leak. A landlord would just patch the leak, not make the underlying condition, not address the real need of the roof replacement. And it was that constant 311 call, HPD would write a violation, either the landlord or HPD would do emergency repairs. And then in the, a couple months later, a couple weeks later, it would start to leak again. So the goal was to get at repeat users of our enforcement activity. And that's why the rules of the City of New York, criteria for AEP, include a ratio of B and C violations issued in the previous five years. So we're looking at recently issued B or C violations as well as a certain amount of emergency repair charges. So for the smaller buildings, under 15 units, we're looking at $5,000 of emergency repair charges that we spent, whether you paid it or not. So that's where it's getting at, people who might be using landlords who might be using our ERP to address their building. Buildings got selected for the program. They get notice of the building, you know, that they're participating in it. And they basically have four months to get their building discharged before being subject to roof-to-seller inspections and fees, inspection fees. In that four months, they need to correct 100% of their heat and hot water violations, 100% of all open-mold C violations, which is the most immediately hazardous, 80% of mold B violations, 80% of vermin violations, and 80% of all other B and C violations. An owner that fails to do that is subject to a roof-to-seller inspection and order to correct, where our staff will then tell the owner, "You have to replace your roof. You have to replace the boiler, replace the windows, point the exterior." Whatever system is causing the violations is on the AEP order. It's posted at the building, it's mailed to the owner, it's filed with the county clerk's office as a lis pendens. And the owner then has an opportunity to do that. Compliance after that four-month period includes correction of all the violations, the percentages that I mentioned before. In addition, they have to comply with the AEP order to correct. They have to pay whatever ERP balance is open at Department of Finance or entered into a payment agreement. They have to register their building. And once they meet compliance with that, they can get discharged. I mentioned it's fee-heavy, so after the first four months, owners that fail to get out, in addition to being, receiving an order to correct, they are charged a $500 per dwelling unit building inspection fee. And that's for, that's the next six months of being in AEP. And it's for our, for the performance of routine inspections by AEP. So it's $500 per dwelling unit. And if the building remains in the program after six months, it's a second $500 per dwelling unit fee. So the initial inspection fee caps out at $1,000 per dwelling unit. They are also subject to complaint inspection fees, which is $200, and that's if a tenant calls 311. And as a result of that 311 call, we issue a B or C violation. It's $200 complaint inspection fee. They're also subject to a $100 false certification fee, which means if the landlord certifies correction of a violation and we inspect and we determine that it was falsely certified, they get, it's imposed a $100 false certification fee. All the fees get billed through Department of Finance and become a lien against the property.
So thank you, thank you for laying out that, that background and context on how it works. So digging into how the program is working. I understand that there have been 386 buildings that have gone through AEP more than once. That's crazy, given these, these, this level of fines and fees and everything. So can you talk about the effectiveness of the program? How many buildings are actually paying these fees, you know, after the four-month period, et cetera?
So to date, we have, 3,387 buildings have gone through AEP. It's 15 years old. We do have repeat buildings. The program, just to let you know, when program does receive the new list, we run the list every January 31st. What we do look at is to see how many of those buildings were in repeat rounds. It is possible, like repeats from this year might have been from 15 years ago, which, you know, it, that's a big gap of time. We look at those repeat buildings and as a program, what we do is to look to see if any ownership has changed. So sometimes it's a matter of, you know, the old owner corrected it, but now it's a new owner. If ownership hasn't changed, we then look, we, AEP under the statute, we have the ability to take immediate action. So, which removes that four-month opportunity to get the building discharged and we go right to issuing an order. So one of the things program looks at is, is it the same owner? Was it 15 years ago or was it just a year ago? And also, we do, we do a quicker inspection of the building to determine whether any system replacements need to get done. And if we believe system replacements need to get done, it's the same owner. It hasn't been that much of a big gap in time since being back in AEP. We have the authority to take immediate action. So then we send those landlords a notice, basically saying, "We're taking immediate action and where you're being imposed the fees right away. You're not having the four-month period." Just another point, for buildings that do get discharged in the four-month period before fees and an order is imposed, those buildings that get discharged are monitored by HPD's Division of Neighborhood Preservation for at least one year. And the whole point of that monitoring is its eyes on the building to make sure that if we see complaints, if we see violations start to trickle upwards, we could try to address it then.
That's, that's very helpful. So there, my understanding is that there are a certain number of buildings that, again, you know, they are bad and they are coming back into the program after a short period of time, not addressing system improvements, things like that. What are some of the tools that HPD has to sort of escalate on them? And specifically, if you could talk about, in relation to alternative enforcement, when does, when does HPD pursue the 7A program?
So 7A is, AEP is definitely a big referral source to 7A. And basically, we want, especially if AEP is going to do work, if it's not, the building's not being managed, and that's sometimes the case. It's just that maybe, you know, the building's not managed properly, there's system work. If AEP does the work, one of the reasons why 7A was actually put under the Division of Special Enforcement, which is the same division of AEP, is that we wanted to make sure that if AEP does the work, that we try to get a 7A administrator to protect the city's investment of the system work. AEP makes referrals to 7A. For 7A, 7A looks at, a good referral for 7A looks at conditions of a building. They have to be dangerous to the life, health, and safety. So you're looking at, you know, really bad systems. A boiler might need to be replaced, roof needs to be replaced, there's plumbing, you know, leaks throughout the whole building. So the conditions have to be very poor. We also look to make sure that the building is occupied legally, that it's not illegally converted because the 7A administrator, it's responsibility to do any work would be then to convert, make sure that the work is done to get permits. You need to have a building that's occupied legally with no illegal conversions. And a big factor is tenant support. If tenants are not willing to support the 7A, we can't bring it. So what 7A, the 7A unit does, the 7A unit at HPD is basically responsible for overseeing the 7A administrator who's appointed by the housing court judge. The 7A administrator basically steps into the shoes. They don't take ownership of the building, they just are responsible for managing the building. And we, 7A goes into the building before even referring a case to litigation. They talk to the tenants, they have, we have a construction project manager and we have community coordinators that meet with the tenants of a 7A, a possible 7A building, explain the program, explain that, you know, rent will have to be paid to the administrator. And then we ask if they support the building. We need at least one-third of the tenants to support a 7A case before we make the referral to go to housing litigation to get the 7A appointed. And that goes the same for any, you know, outside group that refers a building to 7A.
So I've, I've heard from advocacy organizations and individuals, you know, desires to want to go through 7A because it is such a ramp up. So in what conditions, you know, moving to 7A, when does HPD initiate? How bad does a building have to be for, for HPD to initiate 7A?
You need major system work and really dangerous conditions. So some examples of buildings that we've had, you know, referred to 7A in the past, where roofs need to be replaced, there's waste lines leaking throughout the building, no one's maintaining, the landlord walked away, there's no garbage pickup, garbage is piling up in the building, there's rodents throughout the building, raw sewage in the basement, the boiler is, needs to be replaced. So we look at a building holistically. And it's, it has to have conditions dangerous to life, health, and safety, and then we make that referral. Along, it has to have the tenant support, that's the key, key part too.
Why pursue 7A and litigation versus pursuing Department of Finance, you know, tax, tax enforcement action, something like TPT?
I mean, 7A is going to, the minute a 7A gets appointed, they basically step into the shoes of the landlord. If tenants are, you know, paying rent, some tenants, you know, we've had buildings where tenants were holding money in escrow. That money goes to the administrator. They could get, you know, garbage collection, extermination services, you know, door, front door locks. And violations get corrected right away. And then they would apply to HPD for a 7A loan to do the capital work, the major work.
Who, who retains the ownership of a building that has a 7A?
The owner still retains ownership. And in order for a 7A to be discharged, it would be up to the housing court judge to grant an owner's petition to discharge. Sometimes it's the existing owner, sometimes owners sell the property while it's in 7A and it's a new owner who petitions the court to get the building back, control of the building back. And in the past, some buildings would go through TPT.
And I think, I'm sorry, if I could just add, council member, just because the building is in bad condition doesn't mean the owner isn't paying the property tax. So, you know, and that is really kind of the worst-case scenario where you know the owner has some money to do something because they're paying the taxes, but they're not reinvesting in the property. And so tax lien enforcement is not really applicable in those scenarios. And so I think, and just to support Grace's point, right, our, our goal is to take the quickest route to getting the repairs done. The collection, if there, even if there were taxes to be collected, collecting those taxes or those emergency repair charges are not going to get the conditions corrected for the tenants in a, in a, in a fairly quick manner.
Do you, do you have a breakdown of, of that reality that you just mentioned, 7A administrator, administration? Because there was no tax enforcement to be done, there, there were no arrears versus other, you know, use of other programs?
No, we haven't done that analysis, council member, but we can look at, at the buildings that are in the program right now to see what their, you know, tax liability is.
What are the incentives for, for those folks that decide to become administrators, to go through HPD's process? What is, what is in it for them?
I, I think that that is one of the challenges of the program. Seven adminis, 7A administrators are paid based on the rent roll. And so the way that it works is they, I believe they get a percentage of what is collected after the, the basic repairs are done. So there is a challenge there for 7A administrators. Many of the administrators are in the business of, of tenant protection in some way. You know, they work for an organization or are part of an organization that is looking to assist tenants in, in a bad place. And so they kind of have an imperative to participate. But as you can imagine, most of the rents in these buildings are fairly low to start with. And, and that contributes to why the owner has not done what they need to do. So that is a challenge.
Thank you. Just one more question that I forgot to ask on AEP. Do we have information about what tenant harassment might look like after a building goes into AEP? Or have you seen retaliation, cases of retaliation?
So you see buildings transfer, anti-harassment unit is, the inspection portion is within my division. You will sometimes actually see as a result of our anti-harassment inspections, we issue so many violations that the building will then be in AEP, which is a good thing if conditions that are dangerous exist. It's also common for AEP, when they're doing their routine inspections, to see harassment and make referrals to our anti-harassment unit, who then will call the tenants and they do more of an interview. So we inspect, but we also speak to the tenants to see if the maintenance conditions is, are being used as a form of harassment. And you could see referrals, anti-harassment referrals from AEP buildings. Just like you could see a building go from AEP to 7A, we, all the units work very closely together, they're all related.
Got it, thank you. And just to, to flag, not for immediate response because it's a, it's a detail, but I know a property, 709, at 709 West 170th Street, 331 West 14th Street in Manhattan. The first one was in the Bronx. Examples of buildings who are seeking 7A administrators and have shared with my office that they've run against, run up against barriers in connecting with the agency and, and having the agency move those buildings or help to move those buildings into the 7A program, are these on your radar?
Can you repeat the first address, 709?
709 West 170th Street in the Bronx, 331 West 14th Street in Manhattan.
Yes, so, you know, one, I, I don't know, 709 is an AEP or 705, 70, yeah. So we're aware of both of these buildings and we're monitoring. The, the concern around 7A is also that there is a... The, the concern around 7A is also that there is a, there is an, an escalation of enforcement against those properties, in order to make the case when we go into housing court to a judge that the building owner is not providing what they need to provide. And I believe, and I don't have the details of those properties, but, but the addresses are familiar to me, so we can get some more information to you, council member, about each of those properties.
Great. Well, look, look forward to that, thank you so much. So moving to, to underlying conditions, and again, people who are watching this hearing, folks in the public, the, the, the goal here is for you to be familiar with all of the tools that HPD has at its disposal, and if you, if you feel that your building needs to go through one of these programs, that would help the conditions, email our office, call HPD, you know, be in touch with the city so that we can, we can work with you. I want to raise awareness around these programs. So, underlying conditions, shout out to council member Brewer, who created this program when she was a council member fifteen years ago. But council member Brewer created the underlying conditions program via local law to address persistent issues like mold and leaks, and to get at those underlying conditions. So can you, can you talk about the, the underlying conditions program, and specifically what successes the, the agency has seen with UC?
Hi, again. So underlying conditions is a program within the Division of Special Enforcement. As you know, it was created in 2013, and the program was designed to target buildings that exhibit a high number of mold and, mold and leak violations. And the reason why we were looking at mold and leak violations is because it usually forms the basis of other violations. So it's not just mold and leaks, but it could also lead to collapsing ceiling, lead-based paint, pest infestation. The program's been around since 2013. We look for a percentage of apartments within a building that have mold and leak violations that would indicate that there's a problem with the building system. This year, we recently made a change to the rules to include information from the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to look at conditions that contribute to asthma outcomes and other relevant health indicators. So this is the first year, we just recently finished 2022, the inspections for this round, and we are in the process of issuing underlying condition orders for seventy-five, approximately seventy-five buildings. Just going back to the criteria, buildings that have be, buildings three to five units must have at least fifty percent of their units have at least one mold or leak violation. Buildings six to nine units must have at least twenty-five percent of the units have mold or leak violations, and buildings that have ten units or more must have at least fifteen percent of the units have such violations. Owners that get selected for this program receive a notice as well as the underlying conditions order, and what they're required to do is they have four months to hire a registered architect or professional engineer to inspect their building, look at all of the violations, and determine whether or not there is a system needed and what the underlying cause of the violations are. The architect or engineer must then submit their report, as well as a number of affidavits, to the underlying conditions program. Once we get a sufficient report and all the required affidavits, the owner then must apply for a dismissal request inspection and correct at least eighty percent of all the open mold violations. We did not do, due to COVID, we did not select buildings in 2020 and 2021, but like I mentioned, we just finished the inspections for 2022. Not including this current year, we have, there have been four hundred and forty-four buildings selected and four hundred and seven buildings discharged. We did a report in two thousand and, yeah, we looked at a report in 2019, and we found that a majority of the buildings that went through the program did not have reoccurrences of mold and leak violations.
What percentage was that?
No, just a, I don't have the exact percentage, but we could get it for you. But we had looked at this in 2019 to see the, study the effects of it, and it was overall pretty successful.
Very helpful. That's exactly what my, my next question was, was about folks that were going through this program on a repeated basis. And so similar to my, my line of questions before about AEP, underlying conditions that are not corrected, are those, do they then face higher, tougher enforcement programs?
So what will happen is, AEP is more stringent than underlying conditions, because with underlying conditions, we're issuing an order to the owner and basically telling the landlord or owner, you have to hire a professional to tell us what the underlying condition is. AEP, when we issue an AEP order, where the owner no longer has the opportunity to hire their professional, it's now the construction project manager who oversees the building, who determines what the underlying cause of the violations are. So it is, there are buildings that go, get UC, and they don't comply, and then on January 31st, they get picked up for AEP. And once an AEP order is issued, the building gets discharged from UC because it now has the AEP order.
Thank you, thank you so much. That is, that is very helpful. You're off the hot seat for, for a second. Okay, that's, that's very helpful to understand, and that was my last question, which you answered, is about the Venn diagram between those two programs. So moving to housing litigation, this is, this has been an area I've had a lot, lot of questions about. So there seem to be endless opportunities for HPD to pursue housing litigation, to, to force the correction of, of issues, to recuperate charges and fees, and et cetera, et cetera. So when does HPD seek housing litigation?
Thank you for that question, council member. So the Housing Litigation Division is part of the Enforcement and Neighborhood Services Unit. So our quote-unquote clients are all of these programs that we've been discussing. So most of our referrals do come from these units, from the AEP unit, from the UC program, from the anti-harassment unit, from the Emergency Operations Division. And the Housing Litigation Division brings a host of different types of cases. The majority of our cases are what we call comprehensive cases, which is where we sue an owner for the correction of all of the violations in the building, as well as civil penalties. And our goal is to obtain an order to correct from the court, so we can get the clock starting to run for the owner to correct those, those violations and kind of move forward from there, because our goal, our primary goal is always to get the violations and the conditions corrected as quickly as possible. We also seek warrants for access. We receive those referrals from our Emergency Operations Divisions when they are seeking to do emergency repairs, and either the owner has refused access, or we can't otherwise obtain access, we have to go into court to seek an order, in order for the contractors to be able to access the, the building or the unit in order to make those emergency repairs. We also bring cases against owners where they have a high number of false certifications of violations. In those cases, we do seek penalties for those false certifications. We also initiate 7A actions. Obviously, during this time of year, we have a tremendous number of heat and hot water cases, which we do in rounds in housing court. And finally, HPD is a statutory party to all tenant actions in housing court, so we, we are a party to all of those.
And, and if I may, I also want to point out that Marty's team, the HLD team, works closely with community groups and advocates who want to initiate their own 7A, who initiate their own group tenant actions on cases. Often, our attorneys are working with those attorneys in terms of, of, of speaking through, if we have a case and they have a case, to understand the perspectives of each. Obviously, tenant advocate attorneys are advocating for their clients and their tenants for things that maybe HPD is not involved with. You know, our goal, our attorney's goal is to get those conditions corrected as quickly as possible for the safety of the tenants. So it's not only our own, and, and you heard the, the long list of programs that Marty's unit supports, and really as a next step to some of these programs, to make sure that orders are enforced, vacate orders as well, those types of things, to make sure that owners are moving forward when any of these programs identify that they're trying to stand in the way of making repairs or having the repairs made.
Thank you, thank you so much, and it's, it's really helpful to hear you describe that goal, right? The goal is to improve the condition. So are there metrics you can share about, okay, AEP didn't work, or, you know, underlying conditions didn't work, but when we took the, the, when we took the, the building to housing court, X percent within X timeframe were able to see improvements? Do you have information of that sort?
I would say that it's very difficult to call which, which input is really the, the driver to make someone take an action. You know, we track how many violations get closed as a result of our housing litigation cases. Often, you know, one of these other programs will provide a little bit of a push, and then HLD will provide the final push to get it over the line. I don't know that we can separate out which is the, the bigger, the bigger driver of that improvement, but I think, and especially in, in anti-harassment cases, I think that where we have done some work to look at building portfolios, that has been a, a huge effort between the, the anti-harassment team and the Housing Litigation Division to move things forward together and really kind of jointly get that response from the owner that we're looking for.
Got it. Thank you, and look, look into that and let me know. Let us know. So I, the reason that I led with that question is because, of course, one, one document that I've seen multiple times and is cited often is the, the very extremely low rate of collection by the Judgment Enforcement Unit within, within the agency. You know, with rates, I think the controller's audit was from 2016, and we saw rates of collection of those, of those judgments at two and three percent. So that, that's not our, you know, that's not, that doesn't seem to be HPD's metric of success, it's about the repairs. So let us know, you know, what metrics you, you do have on that front. But on the Judgment Enforcement Unit's rate of collection, can you speak to present day and 2016 was?
Yeah, and again, I'll, I'll start off to just go back to something that I said before to, to councilman, number of Velas, I think, was the one who raised the question, right? The, our collection rate, again, in cases, I think, where we have a, a court order with an owner who has participated in the case, I would say is fairly high. Again, I don't have the numbers with me today, but we can look at that. What we tried to talk with that auditor about was these kind of judgments where the request for the default penalty is extremely high, and then when the owner eventually comes in and provides some evidence that conditions were corrected, that judgment is reduced, and so if you use that huge $2 million judgment as the denominator in making that percentage, it doesn't really make sense in the long run, right? So what we're really looking for is what is the collections on the cases where we have someone in court doing that work with us, and we can look at that certainly and get back to you, council member.
Thank you so much, and one more question, and this is hyper-specific to the Assistant Commissioners Division. How is your staffing? Are you, are you short-staffed within the litigation division?
Thank you for that question, council member. Yes, we are, we do have quite a few vacancies on the attorney lines currently. We are doing everything in our power to, to fill those lines. It has been challenging, and so we are down, I think, approximately around the twenty percent for attorneys. But again, we are making all of our efforts to, to fill those lines.
All right, thank you so much. Scanning my document here. No way, I have to have more questions, of course I do. Okay, so thank, thank you, thank you so much. So DLB, moving to the Certificate of No Harassment Program.
That, the, most of the Certificate of No Harassment Program falls under the Housing Litigation Division as well. I'm glad to have Guillermo at the table as well, but I, your questions might actually go to us.
All right, I will, I will defer to whoever has, has the answer. So I mean, I, just, just to get right to it, right, there was a pilot program for the Certificate of No Harassment. We are concerned that, especially in gentrifying communities, but in more communities than just the gentrifying ones, there are owners that are using construction as harassment, right? So the, the question is, what outcomes has the pilot program achieved, including whether property owners have been deterred from continuing to harass? What, what outcomes have we seen from the program, from the pilot?
So I think that's for HPD, so I will turn it to Marty.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner, or council member, sorry. So a, as you know, the, the initial pilot program was implemented in 2018, and we just recently, the, the legislation was amended late last year, and we ran our second iteration of the pilot program, the building list, in June of this year. We did submit a report to the council last year. It was a little difficult to really analyze the success of the, of the program based on the number of, of applications that we had received at the time of the, the end, by the end of the initial pilot program, which was a three-year period, mainly, we think, due to COVID. Currently, we have received a total of seventy-one applications. Since 2018, thirty-one of those applications received grants, thirteen of them have been denied, and two of those went to trial, to a full hearing at oath, and those denials were a result of those hearings. Eleven of them did settle, once we brought our proceeding at oath. Nineteen of the applications have been withdrawn, and that can only happen prior to HPD making a final determination. Two of the applications were rejected for insufficient documentation, and we currently have six pilot program applications pending. You know, we continue to, to look at all of the outcomes from these, from these applications, but, and we look forward to doing further analysis of the success of the program.
Can I just ask you to, to expand upon what some of those statistics really mean? So what does it mean when a case settles? So eleven settled, what does that mean?
So what happens is, when we receive an application, HPD conducts an investigation. So we go to the building, we look at all of the conditions, we speak with tenants, we speak with them about their experiences during the prior, you know, inquiry period, which is a period of five years, any experiences they've had with harassment in the building. We do a whole host of other research, looking at other agency data. We speak with community groups who have knowledge of, of the buildings, and the investigator issues their report. It is reviewed by an attorney who makes a determination as to whether or not there's reasonable cause to believe that harassment did in fact occur during that five-year period for the pilot program. And if they do make that reasonable cause determination, then we issue an initial determination of cause, and at that point, we, we commence a proceeding at oath, at the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings. And at that point, a, an application can no longer be withdrawn because there has been a determination made, and we move forward with a hearing, but the owner does have a right, under the statute and the rules, to settle without, you know, it saves them some time as far as getting the denial, they only can settle with a denial, but it just starts the clock ticking for them to have to wait five years to either reapply, or they can begin a, a process to engage with the agency on a cure.
Thank you so much for that. And would you say that after a building is, is told, or, you know, whatever the process is for them applying for the CONH, after they, they do that, have you been able to tell whether complaints about harassment have decreased?
In, in a particular building?
A particular building.
Sorry, just to clarify, this is after, just after the application has been submitted, not after a grant or denial?
Both, either, either case, yeah.
I mean, like, as I mentioned, once an application has been filed, we are actively reaching out to tenants to hear from them, both current and former tenants. So yes, we are, we're getting whatever complaints they have, we, we seek them out. If an application has been granted... has been granted, and the CONH thus goes forward, and an owner can then obtain the, the permits from the Department of Buildings for the specific types of work that, that requires a certificate, if we do receive complaints of harassment, we do investigate those. And there is a mechanism under the statute for us to, to rescind a certificate of no harassment based on an investigation of, of any harassment that may be, that may be found.
I, I'd love to, to follow up, just because I see some of my advocates shaking their heads about outreach and about whether, whether HPD is able to go in and, and speak to tenants. So I'd, I'd love to have more information on what that looks like, what, you know, the, the before and, and after, right? The, the, the if then, if, if, if an owner does this, then HPD is able to enter a building and speak, and then, you know, so on and so forth, what you just described with that process. Okay?
So what hap, if, if a certificate of no harassment has been granted, the only time we would follow up with tenants about harassment is if they contact us. And they would have, you know, the investigators' information who they can follow up in, they can als, with, they can also file complaints with 311. But that would then kind of trigger our looking further into any allegations of harassment. And then we would also follow up with the owner to find out what's happening from them.
Great. Okay, now, my closing questions, I promise, and then, and then we'll go into public testimony. By the way, my four-month-old is downstairs, and he's been sleeping the whole time, and I just keep texting my, my dad to be like, hey, is baby alive? Baby is alive. And it's really shocking that they have not woken up, because they, I guess they believe this, these are important questions to be asked. So, thank you, baby. Okay. So just, I, I wanna, I wanna close with some additional questions that I had on the heat sensor pilot program. I'm not gonna ask these 10 questions, but let me, let me just see here. So in, in terms of the, the way that the heat sensor program is, is carried out, how does the agency, so the landlords are putting these sensors throughout buildings, in the living rooms, et cetera, and then they are reporting and signing affidavits to HPD saying that, you know, what the temperatures were, right, reporting on the temperatures? How does the agency verify that tenants have been, have, have been providing access to temperature data?
Thank you, Councilmember. Unfortunately, the, the expert on this is, is our Assistant Commissioner Mary Farina, who couldn't be here today. I will try to answer to the best of my ability, but he may need to correct me on some of the specifics in terms of your written questions. So, once the heat sensors are installed, the owner, as you said, does have to provide the agency with the list of apartments in which those sensors were installed. We are required to do inspections every few weeks to ensure that heat is being provided. We do try to go to those apartments where the tenants have the heat sensors, and we go to some apartments where tenants refuse the sensors as well. We require the data to be sent to us, I believe, three times during the course of the heat season, so we can verify that the data is being collected and being provided. I do not know if it's the inspector or it's someone in the office who may verify with the tenants about their access to the information, but we can get that information to you.
Thank you so much, and I wanna acknowledge Councilmember Brewer, who also created the underlying conditions program. You are such a boss. Thank you for joining. And, okay, so, so that's, that's helpful, and we can, we can follow up. I mean, okay, I, I think many of these questions depend on, on those nitty-gritty details, so I can just, I can send heat sensor questions as a follow-up, but have some, some, some questions here around the relationship between, you know, a backlog or having a deficit of inspectors available, and then the bi-weekly inspections, some of these program requirements, and how HPD is able to, to meet those requirements. Okay, I will ask about scheduling of inspections. I receive just the most complaints about HPD's inspectors going in to, going into buildings when tenants are not available, giving the landlord a heads up, but not the, not the tenants, and that resulting in, in conditions not being addressed. And so what are, what is HPD doing to modernize the way that inspections are scheduled? Have you considered creating an app, say, to, to schedule inspections, or any, any other changes that you've considered making in order to streamline that, that process?
Thank you, Councilmember, and yes, we've heard, you know, requests for that as well, and I think it's a service we would love to provide. It's a very complicated thing to schedule for us, because we always wanna have the flexibility to handle the most dire thing that comes in, especially during heat season where we feel that we can understand whether a building has heat or not by going to any unit. It might slow us down to schedule those, because we can go and hit an entire block and hopefully be able to get that done in a short time. Some of the other limiting factors for us are things like, you know, you can come up with an average time that it takes to do an inspection, so you can come up with an average number of stops that can be scheduled for a day. But unfortunately, our inspectors too often run into situations which extend the time needed for an inspection, and so that makes it very complicated for us to not overschedule people. And I think just as bad as, as leaving a card, and if someone's not home and telling them, please call us to schedule an inspection if you still need us, is to make a lot of people wait home and then not be able to come. So, this is technology that we would like to, you know, look into, and really would require a lot of work, but we understand the benefit of it. And so, something for us to just try and figure out how to address tenants' needs to do that. And again, as I said, when we go and tenants aren't home, we leave a card and ask them to call us. We send a letter as well, both on the code inspection side and on the emergency repair side, to try and get in contact with as many tenants as we can when we need to do those inspections.
Thank you, and I look forward to working more with you all on that. Just in, in a closing question, and this is specifically from the 179th East 93rd Street Tenant Association, they, they have shared with my office that their landlord, Goffman, routinely falsely certifies. They've, there's just complaint after complaint, and it wastes tenant time, and the, the base goal being to get repairs made and, and to improve conditions. Not making, I don't know myself, I don't know this landlord myself, I don't know the, the details myself, but a building like this, right, and the landlord like this that is routinely falsely certifying, you mentioned that proactive, or that comprehensive litigation goes after, the litigation unit goes after them. What, what else? What, what is the suite of tools that HPD has to go after these bad actors?
Thank you, Councilmember, and again, I think this is where we wanna look again at, at the public advocates' recommendations, and we have our own ideas about other ways in order to stop bad actors who routinely falsely certify. I think, you know, it is something that we wanna look at, that we wanna strengthen our tools to be able to combat, because right now, there is, you know, it, it is a difficult position for us to be in.
Thank you. I am in strong support of that piece of legislation. I just wanna give the Florida Councilmember Brewer for that.
I know this was asked, you know, I've been doing this work a long time. How many inspectors do you have? How many did you, do you vacancies? How many do you need? And the same thing on the legal department. How many, the help on these topics? I know you discussed it before. I'm convinced that without different pay and virtual, we're not gonna be able to hire anybody.
Thank you, Councilmember. If you give me a second.
Mary and I do not agree on that topic, however.
We, we do have-
You can't say anything, but I can. You've got to have different schedules. Go ahead, I'm listening.
So for inspectors, our current head count is 257.
Okay, for inspectors, yep.
For, you said attorneys was your other?
Attorneys.
Thirty-three attorneys.
Now, what did, what have you had at the max? How many inspector vacancies do you have?
We have over 100 inspector vacancies right now.
Okay, and how are you gonna fill them?
And, again, I apologize, just to reiterate what we've said, right, we have done, we have improved our outreach significantly over the past year, realizing where we are.
Haven't hired anybody. It hasn't made a difference.
We have, we have hired about 20 inspectors.
Twenty out of 100.
We've hired, let me say, we've hired 50 or 60 inspectors, but we've lost people at the same time.
Okay.
And so, you know, we are moving in the right direction, not as quickly as we would like.
And you think that's because of salary or inability to have a flexible schedule? Or what do you attribute it to? Because this has not been true in the past, to this extent.
You know, I think, as, as all the city agencies have said, over COVID, the hiring freeze, things like that, really put us in a, in a behind position, and we are trying to catch up with that now.
Okay, and how about the attorneys, ma'am? I know this woman 40 years, just so you know.
We do have, we're about 20% down on attorneys.
20% down, so you have 33 attorneys now.
Yeah.
And how many, so you, you need another, my math isn't that good.
Seventeen or so.
You need another 17 more.
We have, no, we have, we have 13 vacancies right now.
13 vacancies in terms of attorneys?
Correct.
Okay. I've not heard any attorneys being hired by the city because people wanna be virtual.
Yeah, we did just fill a couple, that's why.
Okay. And the other question is, maybe I should, but how many, again, is hard, average inspections per day can an inspector do? I see them, I know how hard that work is, but just generally, what's the average per day that an inspector can do?
Thank you, Councilmembers. So it depends on the borough somewhat, too, because travel time factors into how many you can do.
I only care about Manhattan, you know how I am.
Oh, okay, only Manhattan, only Manhattan.
I care about the Bronx.
Yes, I know.
Manhattan and the Bronx are two of the, Manhattan and the Bronx are two of the easier boroughs, because everything's close together. And the buildings are big, so a lot of people, right? An inspection doing just complaint inspections, inspector doing just complaint inspections can probably do about 15 inspections in a day.
Thirteen a day?
Fif, about 15 a day, if they're not doing lead inspections. So as soon as you hit a lead inspection, of course, which requires you to inspect the whole apartment, that slows you if you find a child under six in the apartment.
Okay, our lead, our lead is lead up or down? Just curious, in terms of the number of complaints?
The number of complaints.
NCHA's doing a great job. With all due respect, health and housing need to coordinate better. You need to coordinate better, according to people who used to work for the city who complained to me.
I will take that under advisement, Councilmember, but we definitely work very closely with the Health Department on lead.
Okay.
The number, I'm sorry, your question was-
Whether, whether it's up or down in terms of lead complaints?
Lead complaints are up, and that is mostly because of the changes in the law.
Right.
Over the past several years, right? So now, a child just has to spend 10 or more hours in an apartment, right? The, the rules have changed.
Right.
So it's hard to compare to previous periods.
Okay. I did, I sent a letter, I'll send it to you again, just because it needs to be answered, about this topic, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and happy to, to follow up jointly. On behalf of Councilmember Hanif, proposed Intro 243 in relation to posting space heater safety notices. Does HPD support this legislation? Do you have any recommendations for changes?
Thank you, Councilmember. And so we absolutely agree with the intent of the bill, which is to educate tenants and owners about the safety of space heaters and how to use them safely. We just would like to talk with the Councilmember more about maybe more effective ways to do that communication and outreach. As you may know, there's a lot of signs already that owners are required to post, and just one more sign we're not sure is the way to get people's attention to the importance of the issue. And so, you know, we'd be happy to have those conversations.
Great, thank you so much. And before I finish with my line of questions, anybody else have questions? Before I finish, could you please commit to sending us at the City Council the relevant program budgets, crosswalks to budget codes, and capital project IDs so that we can have productive discussions during the budget hearings come the spring?
Our Budget Office is certainly reviewing that request. We don't have that much capital in our area, but certainly the other funding sources.
Great. And, and head account data I didn't mention. Wonderful, well, thank you, thank you so much. There's, there's a lot of good information that we exchanged today. I will very closely be looking for your follow-up letter with, with the more details, detailed information. But again, it's a priority for this council, it's a priority for me to protect what we have, right? We, we're not gonna make any sort of dent in the housing crisis if we're, we're, you know, have a revolving door and we're losing units due to code enforcement issues. So thank you for the work that you do, and thank you for working with us to, to make it even better.
Thank you, Councilmember. We appreciate the, the opportunity to talk about our programs. I know that some of them are complicated and some of them are weedy, but we appreciate the opportunity.
We will now turn to testimony from members of the public who have registered to testify, both in person and via Zoom. If you're joining us via Zoom, please listen for your name to be called, and you will be, receive a prompt to unmute. Please accept that prompt before you begin. In the interest of time, all members of the public will be set to a two-minute clock so that we can hear from all who have registered to testify. First, we will hear from Samuel Stein, followed by Emily Goldstein, Noelle Francois, and Jackie Delval.
Can you hear me?
Sorry, no.
Am I, am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you to the committee for holding this hearing. My name is Sam Stein. I'm a senior policy analyst at the Community Service Society, and I'm a, a member of the Right to a Roof Coalition. I've supplied more extensive written comments, and I'll briefly summarize the recommendations from them now. The first recommendation is to increase civil and financial penalties. At the end of 2020, in each of New York City's five boroughs, between 65 and 85% of open code violations in rent-stabilized buildings remained unresolved for a year or more. The current financial penalties are not enough. Second recommendation is to expand proactive enforcement, as we've talked about today. Throughout 2019, New York City spent $48 million across more than 10,000 properties to correct dangerous issues in rental buildings. A year later, landlords had paid back less than $8 million of the $48 million in costs. We must be serious about both doing proactive enforcement and recouping costs. Third recommendation is to expand and reform 7A. Between 2016 and 2019, an average of 23 7A cases were filed in housing courts. In contrast, there are currently close to 10,000 chronically distressed buildings in New York City, representing over 115,000 apartments. The 7A process must be reformed to be quicker and more accessible to tenants. The fourth recommendation is to integrate NCHA into the mainstream code enforcement system. NCHA residents should have the same rights and protections as other, that other tenants can access, the right to HPD code enforcement and inspections, and the leverage to get those code violations cited and have repairs completed. Our fifth and final recommendation is to bring city FEPs inspection standards in line with Section 8. The city should make bi-annual inspections standard and ensure that city dollars are not being pocketed by landlords who do not maintain healthy and safe living conditions.
Thank you.
Yep, much more detail and data on these issues in our testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, thank you so much, Sam. And can you just repeat, can you just repeat, for 7A reform, 23 cases filed, 10,000 buildings in distress with 115,000 apartments? Is what you shared? Okay, I guess thumbs up or thumbs down. Okay, all right. All right, well, thank you so much for, for testifying, and I'll, I'll surely be following up with questions on your testimony.
Thank you.
Next, Emily Goldstein, followed by Noelle Francois and Jackie Delval.
Good afternoon. My name's Emily Goldstein. I'm the Director of Organizing and Advocacy with A&amp;HD. A&amp;HD is also a co-founder of the Right to a Roof Coalition, a coalition that Sam just mentioned as well. Really appreciate you holding this hearing. Code enforcement is the unsexy, but one of the most important issues to actually ensuring that residents of New York City have safe, affordable, and healthy housing. And it's a huge priority for both A&amp;HD members and in the coalitions we're working with. I want to particular, I submitted written testimony, there's a lot in there. I wanna particularly focus on the issue of civil penalties. We're strongly supportive of increasing the amounts of civil penalties. They're ridiculously low right now. They're ridiculously low right now, and don't actually serve as any sort of a real deterrent to landlords who are violating the law repeatedly. We also have some recommendations for how to strengthen Intro 583, in addition to what's in there already. We really think this issue that's been discussed already in this hearing of when and how our fines and penalties actually collected is hugely important. If the penalties are on paper but aren't actually happening in practice, they don't have the impact that they're intended to have, and this is an issue that we hear repeatedly as a frustration from tenants, organizers, attorneys. They go to housing court, they go through the entire process, and then the settlements essentially wind up reducing or waiving the penalties that could have been collected. We also think that it, there could be improvements to the language around sort of adding the watch list that's proposed to open data, and making sure that all that information is transparent and accessible. What's in there is really good, just have a few additional suggestions. And we also have a few suggestions to make sure that landlords are not able to hide behind LLCs in order to avoid the watch list, because we want to really make sure that that recommendation, or that, that piece of the legislation acts as intended. Happy to answer any further questions, there's more in, in the written testimony, and thank you again.
Excellent, thank you so much, Emily, I'm going to turn it to Councilmember Brewer, who has a question for you.
Thank you, no, I feel so positive about ANHD because of the work you've done on data at the courts.
Thank you.
Does any of that data help us with inspections and some of the work that this committee is focused on?
Yeah.
That would be very helpful to have that data.
Yeah, and, and we can, I don't have it all in front of me, but obviously, we can work with you on it. I think a lot of the data that, that we've worked so closely with you on helps to point to, in particular, how to figure out which buildings should be considered for things like the watch list, which buildings should be considered for expanded proactive enforcement, right? Like, that data is, is really our best tools for thinking about how buildings need to be put into those programs, and then when we look at that data and cross-check it against the lists of what in, what's already in those programs, I think it can help to answer some of the issues and questions you all have been raising about where are these programs effective, where are the city's sort of tools working as they should be, and where do we need to take a closer look?
So does the, the amazing Data Committee that you put together, is that still active? And is this data readily available, or will be readily available, so it could be used? I was never quite clear how it was being used.
Yeah, so, there's a bunch of different data work, so hopefully, I'm going to refer to the right thing. So, ANHD has the Displacement Alert Project. That is all online and readily available. It has several different components, so people can look at it in different ways, by district, on a map, et cetera. It's all, it's all online and publicly available, and we're happy to do trainings on how to use that data. We also work with a collaborative of other organizations that are interested in trying to get access to additional data and improve the city's open data systems, so that we can then add that to tools like DAP.
And then where are we with, I should know this, but with, because you mentioned LLCs and hiding behind, which has been going on for, forever, is that addressed ever?
There's been some improvements, but it's still sort of a persistent problem, and so, in particular, you know, we think there are, the sort of who owns what is really helpful in that regard, but we think there are ways, I'm just flipping to the right page, that things that we could, could be done, for example, enforcing owner registration requirements, so that individuals and their contact information is actually on file. If it's the same individuals and the same contact information across LLCs, right, then we can actually get to the people. Requiring individuals to declare what other buildings their agents on when they do those registrations, so that all that cross-checking doesn't have to happen after the fact. And requiring declarations around what LLCs people own, so we'd be happy to work with you on those.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Emily.
Next, Noelle Francois, followed by Jackie Delval and Rima Bigum.
Thank you, can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yes.
I want to begin my testimony by thanking the Chair, Councilmember Priña Sanchez, the members of the committee, and the cosponsors of Intro 434 for recognizing the opportunity to make our city safer. My name is Noelle Francois, and I am the Executive Director of Heatseek, a nonprofit that works with tenants experiencing insufficient heat in their apartments in the wintertime. We use smart temperature sensors to accurately and reliably document the indoor temperature during the winter months, and help tenants prove when the temperature in their apartment is too low. I've spent the past eight years of my professional career using web-connected temperature sensors to help tenants document violations of New York City's heat law, and have unique insight into Intro 434. I'll be providing some additional written testimony, but would like to take this opportunity to give recommendations to improve the expansion of the Heat Sensors Bill. Last winter, Heatseek provided our own temperature sensors to fifty-eight families across New York City who were struggling to get adequate heat. During the heat season, the temperature sensors documented over seventeen thousand hours where the temperature was below the legal limit, from just fifty-eight apartments. It is clear from our own analysis that a low number of heat violations does not equate to a warm apartment. Real-time temperature monitoring gives us a much more complete picture of what's actually happening inside a tenant's apartment, and we believe that it should become a more prominent component of the city's heat enforcement. Heatseek supports the expansion of the Heat Sensors Bill, along with the expansion of resources and staff, to allow HPD to adequately carry out the program and ensure a hundred percent participation. With this expansion, we would like to see the following improvements. First, we believe the automatic data transmission is a critically important new addition of the heat sensor program. We're excited about this provision. HPD should use this data to affirmatively send inspectors to a building when they see that that building is currently in violation based on the real-time data that they're receiving. Next, we believe additional tenant education is needed to make the program a success. We don't believe HPD should rely on landlords to adequately educate tenants about a punitive program that they've been enrolled in. We'd like to see HPD provide a detailed description of the program to tenants, along with a way for the tenants to take action if their landlord is not complying.
Thank you, time has expired.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony. I just want to make a PSA, it's really helpful for us to, us council members, to have your testimony in advance, so we can read it as, because you're not going to get, I remember when I was in your shoes, you just never get a chance to read the whole thing, but if we can skim them, we can ask questions. And I'm not saying that just, just to you, but just to, to the world. But thank you so much for your testimony, and I look forward to, to following up.
Thank you so much. We will now hear from Jackie Delval, followed by Rima Bigum and Jessica Belinder.
Hi, good afternoon, Councilmember Sanchez and Brewer, and everyone else who's there. I can't quite see anymore what council members are left, but thank you for having this hearing and inviting me to testify. My name is Jackie Devaya, and I'm with Take Group Justice and the Stabilizing NYC Coalition. Take Group Justice fights with tenants and community groups to demand better living conditions, affordable rents, and a voice in the policies that shape their neighborhoods. We help hundreds of tenants and dozens of tenant associations file lawsuits for repairs in housing court, including buildings damaged by fire. Stabilizing NYC is a council-funded coalition to organize tenants against predatory equity, harassment, displacement. We hold speculative landlords accountable for unsafe building conditions and neglect. We strongly support Intro 204 and 583 to increase fines for owners for multiple multi-year uncured violations resulting in multi-inspections. The current fines and the inability of HPD to collect them renders the fine negligible, allowing landlords to flout the law. These increases in the enforcement of them constitute a bare minimum of what is needed to meaningfully enforce New York City habitability law. We strongly support Intro 337, which by means of sending the tenants lists of violations will help address those violations, especially in buildings that have a long backlog. Tenants have the right to know about the health and safety condition of their homes. As the pandemic made clear, not every household has access to their building's violation, and this info will help tenants fighting for repairs and fair rents. It's criminal how much of a family's income goes to a landlord unwilling to make repairs. We ask that the council pass Intro 434. The Heatseek program uses technology to monitor heating, must be expanded and properly administer. Winter's here, the reality that many landlords don't provide adequate heat, leading many tenants to use costly and unsafe space heaters. Intro 243 must be passed to ensure electric heaters are used safely. The state of New York through HPD has a responsibility to ensure tenants have safe housing through the oversight of private landlords. It's clear that landlords are not keeping buildings safe and are not providing adequate heat, and HPD is not doing enough about it. Buildings should not be allowed to rack up.
Time has expired.
Okay.
Hey, thank you so much, Jackie, I appreciate your testimony.
Next, we will hear from Rima Bigum, followed by Jessica Belinder and Donelli Rodriguez.
Hi there, just want to make sure you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, so, my name is Rima, I'm the Associate Director of Housing Stability Program over at Chia CDC, and I run stabilized tenant myself. We're a nonprofit organization that builds power, housing stability, and economic well-being of South Asians and Indo-Caribbean communities in New York City. I'm just going to go over my recommendations for some of the bills, instead of reading out my testimony. So, in regards to Intro 163, Intro 484, I understand the need to use technology to be more efficient as a city. In my years of experience as an organizer, some of our housing inspectors don't do quality inspections because they are overworked and the agency is severely underfunded. I repeatedly hear stories from tenants and inspectors that they only, that inspectors only spend a few minutes in apartments and ignore certain prompts to look into certain rooms or places. A general fifteen to twenty-minute inspection is probably not going to take five minutes if we were to pass this. If photos are to be used, there should be no impact to our regular standard inspection, and I do not see that explicitly written into these bills. Photos won't provide enough information on the quality of work, which is exactly where the Housing Maintenance Code fails New Yorkers, and the bill sponsors need to think about this. In regards to Intro 243-A, we are in support of this bill, and ask that the bill go a bit further by requiring landlords to mail tenants a copy of this notice regarding space heater safety, and an alternative option is to provide this as a notice required during lease renewal signings. These notices should be translated into the spoken languages in New York City. In regards to Intro 337, we are in support of this bill, and ask that this be done in the top ten languages spoken in New York City. In regards to Intro 434, we are in support of expanding the heat sensor program, and ask that the program, that this program like this be independent of landlord intervention.
Thank you, time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Update for everyone, the baby is now awake, so, you know, we'll see how it goes, but they're not crying yet, so, keep going.
See if I can see it there, is that working? Good afternoon, my name's Jessica Belinder, I'm a supervising attorney with the Legal Aid Society Bronx Neighborhood Office. I work in the group advocacy practice, and we have a citywide practice that represents tenants' groups largely to enforce the Housing Maintenance Code and try to address tenant harassment and enforce tenant rights. Our funding is through the anti-harassment tenant protection funding from HRA, and part of my reason for being here today is to ensure that we're aware that this is funding that supports all of the legal services providers in the city, largely who do affirmative tenant work to, to assert their rights, when HPD, which only apparently has a line for about forty-odd attorneys for the entire city, can't possibly be expected to enforce the Housing Maintenance Code for everybody. We are very excited that you are having this hearing, and we look forward to working with you in the future on additional issues. We really would like to see a, a, over, like, a review of the entire Housing Maintenance Code and the variety of laws that intersect with each other, to make them more accessible, both for advocates and landlords and tenants, and make them a more seamless resource of legal information. Everyone has said it, at least all the advocates will say it, you can raise the fines and civil penalties as much as you like, unless there's real enforcement. Through imposition of those fines, through the collection of those fines, and through the housing court's sort of interpretation and of the application of the law, you're not going to see a huge change in landlord behavior. And so while we applaud the increase in the fines, and we believe that they are legally supportable, and our testimony kind of goes into some of the issues that might surround the issues of raising fines, we believe that more also needs to be done by HPD to enforce those, and to collect them at higher levels, so that they actually act as a deterrent. We'd also like to just say that we agree that the CityFEP's program should be brought in line with the HPD enforcement sort of standards, and we have some real concerns about some of the legislation which is detailed in our testimony. While we believe that much of it is well-intentioned, there are some real potential unintended consequences for tenants in terms of the burden of proof with respect to the photos, and privacy issues with respect to the photo requirement. We also don't want to diminish the landlord obligation to provide adequate heat, which we are concerned that the sort of information about safe space heaters might unintentionally do. And so we want to make sure that, to the extent that we're going to require that notice, that there would be a strong countervailing obligation to inform tenants of their rights to adequate heat, and how to make those complaints, and how to enforce those complaints. And I think I will leave it at that for now, since I'm over my time, but I appreciate the chance to talk to you.
Thank you, thank you so much, you have a question from Councilmember Brewer?
I'm a, I'm a real open data nut, so, is there any way that you use what ANHD was talking about to see where there are challenges in the future in terms of maintenance, et cetera, et cetera? Is that something that would be helpful to you, to use it? Do you use any data on any?
Yeah, we love open data, sorry. We use it all the time to help us identify buildings that we want to reach out to, because not every borough has as many sort of aggressive tenant associations as we would like. We would love to see more tenant organizing as well, and really strong tenant associations, but one of the ways that we identify buildings, if they aren't coming to us, is to look at the open data and look at vacate orders, to look at persistent problems with rats, or, you know, other conditions that are kind of recurring on a regular basis, and then we reach out to those tenants.
So you do that on a regular basis?
We do, not as much perhaps as we would like, but we certainly do make an effort to do that.
So, are you aware of the work that ANHD is doing with the data and the courts and so on, or that's not come across your desk?
It has, I am aware of the work that they do with data related to buildings. I don't know that I know exactly what you mean by the, with the work in the courts, and so I would want to know a little bit more about that.
We'll follow up, thank you very much.
Thank you. You so much.
Next, Donelli Rodriguez, followed by Faceli Alvarez, Kelly Grace Price, and Doreen Mohammed.
Good afternoon, it's pronounced Donnelly, appreciate you.
I'm sorry about that, thank you.
It's all right, no worries, happens all the time. Good evening, dear Committee on Housing and Buildings. My name is Donelli Rodriguez, and I'm a staff attorney with the Tenants Rights Coalition at Queens Legal Services, a Borough Office of Legal Services NYC. Many of our clients live in rent-stabilized units, Section 8 units, and NICA, all of which are subject to the Housing Maintenance Code. For our clients, the Housing Maintenance Code is a main tool for enforcing their right to a safe home. When landlords neglect to adequately maintain and repair their buildings, the Housing Maintenance Co, uh, Code is a, is a tool that we can utilize to enforce their rights. There also, many of our tenants live in NICA, in decrepit conditions, and is consistently on the top of the public advocates' worst landlord list based on the number of outstanding violations and maintenance issues. These open violations jeopardize the safety and dignity of our clients. I also want to take this opportunity to emphasize that meaningful HPD code enforcement in NICA buildings will greatly benefit hundreds of thousands of low-income New Yorkers. NICA is the largest landlord in the city, and at present, HPD does not post violations, conduct inspections unless ordered by a court, or issue fines against NICA for violations of the Maintenance Code. Yet, as noted, NICA is consistently one of the worst landlords with the most outstanding repairs. The legislation proposed here today is a huge step in the right direction, and we need it to be even more powerful if these protections were explicitly extended to NICA residents. I'm also here today to speak as more than a legal services staff attorney, but also as a former tenant in a Section 8 apartment with repair issues. My parents still live with section, within Section 8 housing, so I have direct experience living with and addressing these conditions. I have used the Maintenance Code to solicit repairs for me and my families. One of the most pressing issues is the lack of heat. This issue is even more urgent now as we go into the cold winter months. Here's how it often plays out in the current system, a tenant lacks heat, so they file a complaint with HPD. Landlord gets notified, so they turn up the heat. HPD sends an inspector, confirms the heat is on and working, but after the inspection, the landlord turns the heat off or provides it intermittently, and no subsequent violation is issued. Because there's no record of lack of heat, no civil penalties can be assessed to incentivize the landlord to adequately heat the building, and a tenant-initiated court action for lack of heat is unlikely to be successful. Here, we see the lack of heat oversight and accountability all in one fell swoop. So I think two of the most important parts of this bill are Number 243 and 434, right? Specifically, in 434, the requirement that HPD conduct heat inspections and identify buildings every two weeks, in addition of the tenant's ability to have a heat-related... the tenant's ability to have a heat-related data transmitted from the new sensors to HPD is critical in relaying real-time lack-of-heat information to HPD. This bill will empower the HPD to automatically issue fines for heat violations. It will also increase the number of buildings selected for this program threefold, and we implore you guys to consider that we do that with the rest of this city. In general, the proposed legislation greatly increases accountability for landlords to make certain that they adequately make repairs and provide essential services to tenants, instead of being able to merely certify they made repairs without any certifications. For these reasons, we believe these bills are a major step towards ensuring enforcement of the Housing Maintenance Code for all tenants, and please read the rest of our testimony for more particular details on the rest of the bill. Thank you, and all power to the people.
Thank you so much, and it's helpful to hear it at the dais, you know, that experience of you call, the heat inspector comes, then the heat was on magically, but then it goes away. So absolutely, would look forward to working with you on that.
Appreciate you, it's a serious issue, and I really want to implore the importance of expanding this to NYCHA. NYCHA, they're living in shambles right now, and it's unacceptable what the city is allowing to happen in the most black and brown community in our city. So I appreciate your time, and thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now hear from Faceli Alvarez, followed by Kelly Grace Price and Doreen Mohammed.
Thank you, good afternoon, my name is Faceli Alvarez, I am a member of Major Road New York. I have lived in Bushwick for sixteen years with my family, and I live in a stabilized rental apartment. Bushwick is the one of the New York neighborhood where many tenants have to move out from their apartment. Due to a lack of repair security and service, it is common to see buildings with hundreds on corrective violations for several years. Even to the NYC Housing Maintenance Code, I require dangerous violations, such as type C violations to be fixed within twenty-four hours. Owners still have this practice of araxing their tenants by not making repairs, to push tenants to leave in their apartment or door facilitate gentrification. That housing code and forming system is not working. It is not uncommon to find tenants who have asked their landlord to do some urgent repair. To their apartment, and the response they receive is, "The building is very old, and I need to demolish." They're forced, and "I need you to move." Another type of answer is, "If you want repair, you must pay me more rent, or you can lose another apartment." In the past, there was leaking in my apartment, the fire department came, broke down the wall, and found the broken pipe, and shut down the water in this building. In another occasion, the toilet was leaking dirty water down to the second floor. After six weeks, landlord came and opened the floor, made me a big hole, left, and never came back to fix it. After one year of repelling, called 311, and the city came fixing the leaking and covered the floor. The landlord just ignored me, and that's broken. The penalty of violation of that Housing Maintenance Code are very light, and many times, the housing department doesn't collect the fine, and the owner must continue to desirigans to a near repair. We say it is time to pass a strong law and higher penalty, both also to make sure that those fees are actually collected.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kelly Grace Price, followed by Doreen Mohammed.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Kelly Grace Price from Close Rosies. I don't usually appear at this committee to testify. I wanted to talk specifically today about the legislation calendared, and I also want to bring in some of my own experience of living in a building that was in the 7A program that has continued violations. I already turned in my written testimony, some of you may or may not have reviewed it. I want to quickly point out some of the legislation discussed today. I agree with everything that the advocates have already said before me, from the wonky times that inspectors show up, to landlords just turning on heat at the last minute for inspections, all of that happens all the time. Specifically about the bills slated today, I'm trying to figure out why Councilmember Marte and Holden basically have the same bill with different sponsors, under different intro numbers. The bill is a terrible idea to begin with. I outlined the points for why the bill is a terrible idea extensively in my testimony. Please take a moment to read it. I've been a photography professional, building photography databases in this city for twenty years. It's no easy feat. It's not an easy thing to do. It's a very expensive behemoth undertaking with all kinds of privacy concerns. Please refer to my written testimony. I also, instead of going down point by point the various bills on the slate today, I wanted to point out specifically regarding Councilmember Hanif's proposed 0243, requiring multiple dwelling owners, I'm sorry, not that one, the heat sensor program, I'm sorry, it's yours, Committee Chair Sanchez. I'm trying to figure out why Class B housing stock is omitted from this bill. I live in a Class B building, an SRO, and it doesn't make sense that only Class A housing stock is participating in this building. I think it's a slippery slope, a bad precedent to start parsing out Class B from Class A housing stock when you're talking about legislation. Those are the things that I wanted to get on the verbal record from my written testimony.
Thank you, your time has expired.
I know my time has expired, but I just want to point out...
I'm sorry, I have a screaming child, and I want to get through all the testimony. I do promise to read your testimony, okay?
I just want to point out, I live in a building...
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, we don't have time, but we'll follow up with you, Kelly from Rosies.
Thanks very much. Doreen Mohammed, followed by Satish Nori and Mike McGee.
I can't, hi everyone, this is Doreen Mohammed speaking. I've been waiting hours to testify, I'm at my doctor's appointment, so I just want to point out that we need to make these hearings a lot more publicly accessible for people most affected. I want to try to keep as brief as possible, but, you know, there needs to be a lot of overhauling with HPD. There have been many advocates, like Donnelly was just testifying about it. So many people have insufficient heat, insufficient hot water, often no heat, no hot water, and it's like a phone-tag game with HPD, and it never leads to action. People have, you know, rodents in their apartments, people have windows with a lack of insulation, I'm one of those, and there just needs to be a lot better of a process. It's really unacceptable that our rents continue to spike, but that we don't get the services that we need, that we're paying for, or even if you're not paying for it, I just think it's just a human right issue. It's a cold winter, it's like a rainy day today. Like, growing up in New York, it's always been the problem of insufficient heat. We saw how people need to use electric portable heaters plugged in, you know, has caused fires and hazards, and like, that shouldn't be necessary. Like, the temperature requirements by the law are also insufficient. Like, for me, having an apartment that faces like the water, like, that doesn't actually meet, you need it like seventy-five degrees and higher, like, all the time. So I just wanted to come over here to say that, and I hope that there'll be actual true action and leadership, especially for NYCHA. There are so many people that don't have heat and hot water, people went without gas for months last winter. I wouldn't be surprised if that happened again. There's just insufficient accountability from our government and our agencies, and a lot of reform needs to happen, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Satish Nori, and then Mike McGee, and Robert Altman.
I just turned it off, okay. Good afternoon, I'm Satish Nori, Executive Director of Just Fix, a New York City space civic technology nonprofit that creates tools to support the tenant movement. Our tools serve to advance housing justice and empower tenants to address housing conditions and obtain repairs. Since 2016, we have helped approximately eight-hundred-thousand tenants through our various tools and products. Our team of twelve engages with tenants, housing organizers, and partner organizations to help level the playing field between landlords and tenants. We also encourage the council to focus on NYCHA tenants. We offer the following input on the bills being considered here today. On Intro 163, photographic evidence can be compelling proof of housing conditions, photos are useful in housing part actions in housing court, and as proof in support of abatements in non-payment proceedings. However, while a photo may support the existence of a violation and demonstrate its gravity, the absence of a photo should not be held up as proof that a violation does not exist. Just Fix urges the council to make sure that photographic evidence submitted by housing inspectors does not serve as a shield, conclusive evidence of the lack of violations. If photos are to be a feature of inspections, why not let tenants take photos of the conditions and have them be part of the inspection report? HPD already has a shortage of inspectors and one hundred unfilled positions. Tenants have the proper incentives, their own health and safety, to report on violations and document them. On Intro 337, Just Fix acts to ensure that tenants have accurate and current information about housing conditions, violations, and resources to address these issues. Our Who Owns What platform was accessed by three-hundred-thousand users last year to research their landlords. Information about open Housing Maintenance Code violations is important for tenants who seek to address these conditions, tenants who need to be aware of dangerous conditions outside of their apartments but in their buildings, and by housing seekers who need to know about the health and safety issues in their prospective homes. This bill attempts to address these issues by requiring a mailed notice, however, once a year is not enough. Given the violation information is online and accessible in real time, tenants should be able to sign up for text alerts about new and existing violations in their buildings, or in any buildings. Text alerts would provide such relevant information to people when they need it, in a way that most people access information. And I've also submitted written testimony. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much, and Just Fix is an excellent resource. My team uses it all the time, so I want to just appreciate the website and your testimony today.
Thank you very much.
I would ditto that. I'm a big Just Fix fan, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you. Mike McGee, followed by Robert Altman and Audrey Johnson. I believe Mike McGee is not present, we will move to Robert Altman, followed by Audrey Johnson and John T. Mayer.
Thank you. Am I on?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I submitted written testimony as well, so I am not going to repeat what you already have in front of you. Just gonna emphasize, I think, two points. I'm a little different here today because I represent landlords who are, more often than not, very responsible, but no landlord is perfect. So, I have to figure out, how do we do something where we don't necessarily harm the landlord and hit them with these much higher fines that are being proposed? And I've given it some thought, and often, we can have a situation where sometimes your bad landlords are never gonna fix this without enforcement, but your good ones will, and there should be some time allowed to be able to fix a violation before it actually vests. If they don't, it can remain low, if it's not fixed within a week or two, or without other some time constraint which you decide upon, then it goes to the higher fee. Next, this is becoming something of a pet peeve of mine, that things are being added to leases and being posted, and someone did some research for me, and I can see that there are now eighteen different signs that have to be posted in a building. When you have so much, sometimes you have nothing, and maybe it's time to think about what really should be posted, and how it should be posted, because such a large amount of things that get posted, just, I would think most of the tenants' eyes would glaze over. So how do we actually do something that, since we keep adding and adding and adding to the signage, where we can actually make it so that it's useful for the tenants when they need it, and so that their eyes don't glaze over? I have some ideas on this...
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Robert, appreciate it.
Thank you. Audrey Johnson, followed by John T. Mayer and Sean Lumkin. I believe Audrey is not present, we will move to John Mayer, who is also not present. Next, Sean Lumkin, followed by Renata Rafi and Debra Wallace.
Can I be texting them? Hello, I'm Shannon Lumkin, I'm with the Opera House Tenants Union in Bushwick, Brooklyn, District 34. Councilmember Gutierrez is our representative, and first of all, I want to thank all of you, the city council members present, especially the chair, for everything that you're doing on behalf of tenants' rights, and as well as all of the advocates who have been testifying as well. I'm a below-the-NEFUT and a Ewing sarcoma survivor, and discovered when I went through this, that my landlord was literally willing to put my life into great levels of risk in order to get me out, to not start a union, to not fight against them. One of the things I want to bring up in this is that, you know, the process of analyzing the code violations, our building has over a hundred and seventy violations right now. Many of them got closed without being properly inspected, and it had to do, you know, with the lack of contact between tenants and HPD, the ability for us to, you know, be home on a permanent basis. But as soon as we do start to stand up for ourselves in our situation, in our landlord, according to Just Fix It and Who Owns What, amazing, you know, it was associated with over four thousand buildings, and I fear that, you know, other people who don't have the neighborhood...
Thank you, your time has expired.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Renata Rafi, Debra Wallace, Lyric Thompson, and Susan Berkowitz. I believe Renata Rafi is not present, Debra Wallace also not present, we will move to Lyric Thompson and Susan Berkowitz, followed by Robert The Bolt and Corey Ortega.
What? No, I'm gonna submit it electronically because you guys want twenty. Hi, how are you? My name is Lyric Thompson, and I was going to go through all of these bills really quickly, but I don't think we have enough time. So I'm going to focus on the Twin Park Fire, and my experience in dealing with HPD, and having non-compliant doors. We've had an issue with our doors since the building was built. It was fraudulently signed off by two corrupt DOB inspectors who were nicked by DOI in 2015, Arten Majuko and Gordon Holder. Now, this has been a root issue that has caused many, many problems, including and not limited to our doors. For eight years, I've been fighting with HPD over doors. For the first four and a half years, HPD wrote and removed violations on a door that was never supposed to be installed on the building. Now, we had hundreds of inspections at that point, I can't help but think that one, or maybe two inspectors, should have picked out the fact that this door should have not been on the building. However, they never caught that. I learned that fact when the door was sealed shut and the tenants were unable to leave the building. When we opened the door, we realized it had no fire rating, and there was a hole in our smoke-stopping wall. Getting HPD to write violations for these conditions has been problematic, because HPD does not train their inspectors in the NFPA codes that govern these doors. Now, I've heard a lot of hoop and ah, a lot of excuses as to, "Oh, we have different codes, we have different standards, we have different blah, 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 blah." At the end of the day, ladies and gentlemen, people are dying of smoke inhalation while they flee for their lives, because HPD cannot be bothered to offer a training class that covers... covers the standards for the doors that they are paid and legally required pursuant to multiple dwelling law 50-8.4 to enforce. I have had to go to the New York Times to have the proper violations writ, written, which were just removed just this week. Just removed. Now, DOB wrote violations this week for our door not being in compliance, where HPD removes the violations. I have video of the door, if you'd like to see it. Now, with regard to videos and accepting videos, tenants should be able to submit a video if there is a violation or violating condition. Waiting on HPD to spy something with their eye is really not a feasible or a workable solution. An example would be, my building is flooding right now as I'm talking to you. If it's raining outside, my building is flooding. Now, HPD was out again. When they removed the violations on the door, they were looking at the gutters. HPD said, oh, I don't see any rain coming down, so call 311 when it rains. My basement floods every time it rains. Now, I don't mean to be rude, I don't mean to be ugly, but nobody has time to deal with this agency that can't even be bothered to let you know when they're showing up. I mean, you just had a baby. If I showed up at your house right now to inspect.
Thank you. I believe you're at time, Lyric Thompson. Thank you so much for your testimony. I believe we are at time. We are happy to receive your written testimony. Thank you.
Okay. Have a nice day.
Thank you so much. We will now move to Susan Berkowitz, Robert the Bolt and Corey Ortega.
Hi, my name is Susan Berkowitz. I'm a tenant and I represent a building in Gravesend, Brooklyn. We have a very unique situation. We are a building that is everything from Section 8 to co-op owners and we have 113 units. We've had 10 years of heat issues and we are currently in the sensor program. We have been chosen this year to be in the sensor program, so I thought you might want some feedback and I will add this into testimony. I know we don't have a lot of time. My experience with it so far is that they, they are relying on the landlords to put up signage to let the tenants know about the program. This does not work. We, it is very confusing for tenants to have inspectors coming in every two weeks just randomly. It's not efficient. They, they did put up a sign for self-closing doors because we are getting other violations on top of the ones we already have. But we have a population that is a lot of elderly and immigrant population, does not speak English, and therefore they, they have no idea what's going on. The only reason I found out about it is because I have been in the heat seek program and I have a sensor in my house along with other tenant who also had one for the past eight years and it has been generating multiple violations, hundreds and hundreds and thousands of hours of violations. However, I've only gotten a few heat violations. I've gotten OMOs, which has not restored the heat. I, and this is before going on this program this year, and that, all that has resulted in my building being chosen, which is great. However, the implementation of this program is problematic. Also, when they get, they only get B violations for when the inspectors come in and note the, that the sensors are not present. But I want to elaborate more about it because I think you do need feedback from buildings that are participating.
Thank you. That's, that's really helpful.
Thank you. Robert the Bolt, followed by Corey Ortega, Frank Ritchie and Warren Schreiber.
Oh, yes, hi. My name is Robert Tevot and I'm a member of the 117, 127 West 141st Street Tenant Association. We are currently in a battle with our slumlord, guardian reality, who has for decades left residents with unaddressed leaks, mold, rats and mice in residents' homes and their racist employees have consistently made inadequate repairs in tenant apartments, so mold comes back and leaks persist. Currently, there are 40 Open C violations at 117 West 141st and 53 Open C violations at 127 West 141st Street. New York City HPD code enforcement practices are institutional procedures that create structural violence in the lives of tenants while continuing to let property owners avoid carrying out repairs by certified professionals. For example, HPD does not provide tenants with advanced notice on inspections, as cited by New York State, by the New York State Comptroller in a September 24th, 2020 audit. How could any business function if they just showed up not knowing if the customer is home? It's crazy. And HPD's Housing Maintenance Code clearly states that the term indoor mold hazard means any condition of mold growth on an indoor surface, building structure or ventilation system, including mold that is within wall cavities that is likely to cause harm to a person and has been cited as a violation by the department. This means any mold should be remediated by a licensed mold contractor regardless of what class HPD decides that, that, that violation is.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Corey Ortega.
How do you do? My name is Corey Ortega. I'm a lifelong rent stabilized tenant of 35, 39 years, currently on rent strike and a board member of the 513, 510, 513 West 134th Street Tenant Association, where this previous heat sensor bill was announced on my block because of the amount of violations recorded. There we go. I support, the reason for my testimony, I support this slate of efficiency bills. That's what I call it because that's what, as a manager, that's what it is, especially the heat sensor bill. I'm a person of color in a low-income neighborhood. I'm Dominican-American and let me try to humanize this experience as a professional who's worked hard to get where I am, but have had to overcome struggles along the way just to get to work or school, as a child, as an adult. And I'm going to tell you something that happened two years ago. I wake up in the morning, it's cold, there's no heat from the night before, there's no hot water. I have to dress professionally. I have to go to work. I have to represent clients. So what do I do? I did what I, I, I did what my mother taught me when I was a child, growing up in the same apartment I live. We got some water, we put it in a, como se dice, en una pa la pan, and we heated all the way and we put it in another bucket that we used to mop and we put it in the bathroom and this is us taking a shower with a little cup. And then at the end, you splash it all on you. Because I live in a low-income neighborhood, doesn't mean I'm going to accept low standards. And I support this bill wholeheartedly because it's going to change future generations. I'm used to it now. I'm still going through it, but I'm okay. But there are going to be future generations of professionals that are going to have to go through this. These bills will stop that from happening. And with the nine seconds that I have left, we have to then organize after this, right? I heard wonderful things from some amazing people and organizations have been fighting this from jump. Now is the time to, after this hearing, organize the tenants, the tenant leaders, the tenant associations to support Councilmember Sanchez as chair and the council members supporting this bill to pass it in 2023. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you so much, Corey.
Thank you. Next, Frank Ritchie and Warren Schreiber. I believe Frank Ritchie is no longer present and Warren Schreiber is also not present, so I will turn to the chair to close the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you so much to our council, to my entire team, to our sergeants, to everyone who is still here. I appreciate you, especially those of you who got here right at the beginning of the hearing and you're still with us. I just want to again emphasize the importance and gratitude for the discussion for everyone who participated, but the importance of talking about these code enforcement programs and what's working and what's not. You know, the, the implementation of pilot programs, if we don't, if we don't look back and see how they've been working, you know, then, then we will not have opportunities to improve. And programs like 7A, which are supposed to be the end-all, be-all of enforcement, if there are issues with that program or if we're not utilizing it to the extent that we need to be as a city, then that needs to be revisited and we need to do more to keep our building safe. So again, I just want to thank everybody and in closing, we'll just say, if you're watching, if you live in a building that has substandard conditions, please continue to call 311, please continue to call all of your, your elected representatives, myself, anyone. We need all the data points in order, in order to make a dent in, in the problem of problematic buildings. So thank you all for your time and energy.